Good afternoon, I'm Gretchen and I'm from records and I introduced myself to you last fall, but I'd like to introduce my newest employee Haley Peterson.
Hi, I'm Haley, nice to meet you. I'm currently a criminal justice student at BSU and I graduated in December. So I'm super excited to start my career off in law enforcement in records. Thank you. I'm planning on it, I'm planning on it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I guess not so much a work meeting topic, but maybe a question for Tom. In regards to the bills, I know you do a good job on reporting, you know, our bills and give it just an update, but I noticed that in front of me, I have the Health and Human Services. Bills and we do have some questions, but we don't often get those part. Explanation of those of those bills, so I mean if we can. I know in the past, we used to to get, you know, Health and Human Services plus the general fund questions answered, but. Not so much lately, so if we can, I don't know if we need to do a work meeting for it or not, but just.
Excuse me, yes, Mr. Chair, I do include those updates along with the general fund in the same email, so they're not parsed out separately. They're all included and they're done generally by date, so depending upon when your question was and the date of the bill. Those are what gets reported back to you in an email. However, you know, sometimes that might not be sufficient for you. If you'd like more explanation or something, if you want to just email me back and say I'm still confused or want more additional information about this particular warrant. We can certainly get that information for you, or alternatively, if the board would like to have those questions addressed formally at the board level, we can start to do that. Think that might just take a lot of time and potentially bog down the meetings, but we can certainly do that if you'd like.
I think, Tim, I have had somewhere, I've gotten, actually got it done and they haven't gotten, they got missed somehow.
Okay.
I think maybe just make sure we.
Okay.
And if that does happen, we can always ask and and I know sometimes with question sessions, perhaps we have. If we just asked a question tonight, we haven't done the research to find the answers, so it's it's better to. I think, collect them and if we wanted to have Ann at a meeting, we could do that.
Sure, and keep in mind, it does take us a little time to go and research those answers because we have to go back through the records. Sometimes it can take up to three to four weeks before we get you those, so if you're thinking that you asked a question at the last meeting. You won't likely get that answered for at least two more meetings, so I would say after a month, if you haven't gotten your questions answered, definitely want to see us. We either may have missed it or perhaps, you know, got communicated some other way, but absolutely, we can get you all the answers that you need for those.
Good, thank you. All right, we'll move on to Northwest Juvenile Train Center update and we have a handout. And Mindy, if you want to come up.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Today I have the 2022 statistical report in front of you. And I'll just go through kind of the basics for 2022 from January one to December 31st. We had a total of 473 admissions to the juvenile center. Of those admissions, 130 were Beltrami County youth. We had a total of 181 of that total admission come in at least two or more times, so repeat intakes. Gender mentioned 195 females, 278 males. And if you kind of scroll through your packet, I won't read it to you, but you can see we have it outlined by race, by age. Per county, you can see each of the the counties that's placed with us, the blue highlight being our eight member counties. I task a county kind of came up and they're now our highest placing county right now. When North Homes closed their secure unit, we absorbed a lot of those intakes. So they've been kind of the top of our placement list, followed by Beltrami and Cass. It's not something you want to be the winner. Yeah, yeah. Today's population for juveniles for Beltrami County, we have currently six, six youth in placement.
What page are you on, Mindy?
This is just information that I brought separately.
Okay.
So today's snapshot, we have six Beltrami youth, four males, two females. We have two in our non-security detention unit, we have two in our long-term residential program. We have one in our security detention unit and we have one in our satellite home program. So within the facility, just some updates for programming and projects we're working on. We are currently offering the 35-day evaluation. We do both short-term and long-term programming based on a court's request. We have in-house stabilization, crisis response, therapy. We now have onsite medication management with a nurse psychiatric nurse practitioner. We have three separate nurses that are on site now, different days, doing anything from medication oversight, physicals. Determining maybe any other referrals that need to be made out for medical or dental. We have outpatient chemical dependency programming, outpatient sexual offender programming, which we also utilize. Polygraphs is part of that program now. And we're still doing our cultural arts program. We don't have a specific staff person that is on our employee roster right now, so we are looking. But we are working with several different contractors right now, bringing them through orientation for different specialties that they offer. Projects that we've been working on, I think last time I was here, we were maybe just switching over our kitchen staff. We were under a contract with summits. We, we did not renew that contract and we went full self-sufficient kitchen, which was a risk. But it's been, it's been proven to be a very positive outcome thus far. We have three, or I'm sorry, two full-time kitchen staff and two part-time. They're all cross-trained as corrections workers as well, which means that our kids can work in the kitchen with our staff. So we have kids working, doing, helping with dishes and both food prep. So they're prepping maybe tomorrow's desserts or tomorrow's dinner. But then they're also learning new skills while they're there. The school district, which is Bemidji School District, is now offering credits towards home act for any kids that are working in our kitchen. So in 2022, that was our first year, full year of being fully sufficient in our kitchen. We were provided 100, awarded $131,000 in different grant money. And our food costs were $133,000, so we paid approximately $2,000 out of pocket for food costs. And with that, we are doing homemade meals, we have three meals a day. We've added an after-school snack, a bedtime snack. And we also have fresh fruits available on the units at all time for the kids. So we really bulked up what we're offering, but the cost savings has been tremendous based on what we're, what we're eligible for in grant funds. So most recently, last month, we, we were awarded a grant for a new oven. Our kitchen is slowly needing updates, so we just ordered a double oven and that will be paid for in full by that grant. Other projects, we put a new roof on the building last summer. We purchased all-new bedroom furniture for our non-secure and residential kids. We had metal bunk beds and metal wall units, we got rid of the metal, which was at a risk. Sharp objects, a little bit higher risk for our kids, we got rid of those and we went to more of a composite. The beds are both on the floor rather than stacked up, they each have a desk and a chair in their room, which the kids think the desks are pretty neat, so that was a positive change. And then our outdoor sport porch, I think we're in the, right in the middle of putting that in. We now have a full outdoor sport porch that has the softball field, the soccer field, a volleyball court, and then we added a pickleball and full basketball court outdoors now. So. Any questions?
No questions, but I also know for having toured the facility is all the paintings that has been done to make it more.
Correct, we brought in, we were awarded a cultural arts grant several years ago. And part of that grant was to put color, like paint colors on the units, they were just, they were white and metal. So we had Brian Dow come down, who's an artist from Panima, he came down and did colorful borders on each of the housing units. And then we painted obviously below that a color. And we're slowly moving through the building, getting rid of the white and getting some more soft colors throughout. Our intake unit was the latest to get remodeled.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Jim.
Um, and I just want to thank you for bringing the kids last year and presenting the the board with a painting and. And I believe it might have went up in the county services building, Tom.
Good, yeah, you're welcome, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Hi, as a new commissioner, I'm still learning a lot of county and programming and and juvenile center. As a teacher, I work with a lot of at-risk youth and so, you know, we're still seeing the effects of COVID the last two years, kids are still behind and and I'm just wondering. I have heard that kids can, and you touched on this, receive educational credits while they're there. If you could just talk to me a little bit more about that, how that works exactly. And then what you have as far as specific positions for mental health services, are they counselors, are they psychologists, et cetera?
Sure, so we, Bemidji School District has classrooms in the building. Our secure unit has two, two classrooms within that unit and they employ two teachers and a para. And that's for only the kids that are in the secure unit, so that's going to be our higher-risk kids. In our non-secure unit or our residential unit, which is also considered non-secure, they have their own wing. So the school district has a full wing with classrooms, the kids switch classrooms throughout the day. Each classroom has a teacher and then I believe there's two pairs that are shared within those seven or eight classrooms. And we also have a lead teacher then that oversees the IEPs on the kids that have them. In terms of like a credit recovery, Bemidji has been great with offering some alternative options for the kids. The home act credits are big or the hours towards home at credits. And then we've also been working with them on cultural credits as well. Depending on what the activity is and how we're tracking it, we trade over to the school district and then they. They roll it into the hours.
They could turn it into like the requirements for electives perhaps, or maybe even social studies, okay?
Yeah, and they've always been very workable if we come to them with a request or maybe an idea. They sit in on our superintendent meetings every Tuesday, one of the teachers does, so we can really trade information back and forth for education.
Okay, very good.
And then in terms of positions, we, we have a contract with one psychologist in town right now who comes in and does any psyche valves that are part of our court-ordered 35-day eval. He is preparing to retire soon, so we've been meeting with other, other options who would be willing to come in and do those psyche valves. Typically, we're given one day a week on their schedule and then we can fill it as we see fit in an order that kids are ordered. I have. Two therapists that come in on a part-time basis from North Homes, so they still work for North Homes, but then we refer the kids for them for services. We have a therapist that comes in from Cardinal Counseling. And then for. Let's see, for the medication management, we have a psychiatric nurse practitioner that comes in. Otherwise, if kids already have existing services that they want to continue with. We can also arrange it so that we can see people through telehealth depending on where their home community is.
Okay, staffing levels, are you struggling to fill certain positions right now, or how's the workforce going?
Sitting pretty well.
Okay.
So when I came to the position almost seven years ago, we had primarily part-time staff. So we probably had double the part-time staff that we did full-time staff. And during COVID, our board was very supportive in looking at, we need to switch that over and start adding more full-time staff. So we had, we were investing in the staff so that they would invest back. So now I think we probably have doubled the full-time staff that we did. But then we're still filling those gaps with the part-time staff, which we typically get from the college. In hopes that they'll eventually come in as a full-timer.
Sure.
And one of the, one of the things that we've found with, by doing that is we were worried about the budget going full-time versus a part-time. And we're actually finding that we're, we're really doing quite well, having gone full-time rather than part-time.
I agree, I think COVID was tough on all of us. But coming out where we are right now, I think it, it gave us a lot more opportunity and we had more discussion that we probably wouldn't have had, had that not happened, so.
Yeah.
Try to look at the silver lining.
Yeah, might be a little more attractive for employees looking to apply for full-time versus part-time positions, so.
Yeah.
Well, thanks for doing what you do.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say thank you for, you know, having the guts to go after the the kitchen program and that sounds like it was a huge success. And being able to incorporate the kids into it when you're doing it yourself instead of just using a summit food services and. And that sounds like a really good, really good program and a great success, so thank you.
And if you, if you want to come out and do a tour, I don't think this board has been out for a tour yet. You're welcome to come for a tour, have lunch, we have a new salad bar, so you can just let me know, we can coordinate, I think we've tried a couple of times, but.
Right, but one of the things that's kind of, some of the people from the board that I'm on have talked about coming down, well, from Thief River or wherever. And really have enjoyed the tours, so if you want to incorporate that sometime, we'll have to work with Tom and and Mindy and get it set up.
Sure, yeah, I'm definitely interested, so.
I think Pennington County has done a couple of their work sessions in our boardroom.
Mr. Chair. So are you seeing numbers increase, decrease? Are we at capacity?
Yeah, so right now we've been sitting high, near capacity in the detention units. I was, I think today we had one bed open, but then a couple of weeks ago, our non-secure unit was at like 25% capacity. So over a two-week period, that filled up. Weather, if we have some warmer days, we see intakes come in, it just, it fluctuates from day to day. I can tell you. So last year, 2022, we had 473 admissions. The year prior, we had 508, and then prior to that, we had 460. So they, they're pretty, they're staying pretty steady. We do still accommodate our eight-member counties first, but we are seeing intakes from across the state. And I think more facilities are closing down, so we're taking the hit on that. We turn a lot of kids away.
And one final thing, Mr. Chair, we did have a Northwest Juvenile Center meeting last week and I just want to commend you for the, the work that you are doing there. I really appreciate the staff updates, it sounds like a lot of the programming is going well. I'm hearing success in these satellite homes, so I want to encourage you to keep doing, you know, the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
I think, and I know we were on a time line, but one of the things that I see as being a help is. It's not just the Northwest building, but we've got satellite homes too, and if, and if you're not aware of that, you want to speak just. I think the names are interesting, but.
Yeah, and I, do I even have them in front of me?
That's okay, you don't, that'll be, that'll be the next time.
Don't tell Lucy, so we have seven satellite home licenses of the seven, six are currently operating and active. Our licenses are through the Department of Corrections and they're considered a group foster care license. So there are not many left of those in the, in the state and they no longer give those out. We have three homes in Bemidji, one in Cass Lake, one in White Earth and one in Roseau. So we're currently looking to fill the last home. Those homes, the capacity is five or six, depending on the size of the home. We don't always go to capacity though, depending on the kids that are in the home, the parents may want to stop at two or three, just to provide better, better services.
Does that come through us too, and like when the foster care licenses come before us with those as well, or?
No, this is through the state licensure.
Okay.
Yeah, they still, they're under the umbrella of Northwest.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, any other questions or comments? Well, thank you, Mindy, it was great hearing from you. All right, our next topic to discuss will be the Bemidji Veterans Home update. Hi, Shane.
Good afternoon, King, I'm some county veteran service office. And I'm here to introduce our new Bemidji Veterans Home Administrator Kevin Gish. And we have some pictures and things that we're going to add to this presentation, so without further ado, I'll turn it over to Kevin to introduce him. Run the pictures here.
Thanks, Shane. We sure as thank you for the opportunity to come and introduce myself to you and talk to you a little bit about veterans. So very exciting, continues to be very exciting, many, many years in the making. Shane mentioned that you wanted to know a little bit about myself. I'll tell you, Tim and I got stuck on the phone the other day as he prepped for chat about, my name is Kevin Gish, again, I'm a Minoma native, dad worked for a while, very smart kid. Grew up between first Lutheran church and the post office. So I graduated from Minoma High School, came up here to BSU, loved every bit of it, but there were no jobs up in Bemidji for business degree folks when I graduated. So down to the Twin Cities I went, I got a job at United Healthcare Corporation for three years in Minnetoka. Really wanted to get on the provider side instead of the insurer side. So went to North Memorial Medical Center, really enjoyed the work there, tremendous organization still is today. But the North Woods is where I'm from, I didn't want to stay down there. So got an opportunity to come back up here and work at North Country Regional Hospital, worked there for 16 years. Started out as a clinical financial analyst, worked up, I ended up being in charge of a couple of different departments. Under Jim Henkel and it was there where I got my Masters of Healthcare Administration from Carlson School of Management, the University of Minnesota. I then got my nursing home administrators license through the School of Public Health, the University of Minnesota. And then proceeded to go to work for Essential Health, I worked as their administrator of their Graceville Campus, small town in southwestern Minnesota. Hospital, nursing home, assisted living, couple of clinics. After doing, and also their clinic and surgery center in Wapton. And after a couple of years of doing that, I had the opportunity to go to Foston and I never left Bemidji, by the way, I kept driving. So I drove eight years to Foston back and forth at the hospital, the nursing home, three clinics, living ambulance service, home health, hospice, et cetera. And then for the last year before I joined Minnesota Department of Veterans Affairs, I was on the road as an interim administrator for health dimensions group. So I was in Iowa, I was in Wisconsin, southern Minnesota places. And I told Commissioner Herkey, the reason I was doing that is because I thought that would make me a better candidate for this job. And it worked, so I started here on December 7th at Minnesota Department of Veterans Affairs. That is my work history. And I know we want to go through some of our slides here and some of the information, so, but at any time if you have questions, please stop me, it is your time that I'm on, so. Resident mission and applications and Luke just told me back in Shane Luke's office that they're putting a few more in. We have 182 applications in at this time for our veterans home. Again, our veterans home will be 72 private room, private bath, nursing home rooms. To be clear, it's a nursing home. We sure hope it feels like a home, but it is by regulation a nursing home, not an assisted living, not apartments, it is a nursing home. So we continue to ask people to put their applications in, you know, Shane and Luke and the other county veteran service officers, tribal veteran service officers. Stand ready to assist our veterans to get the benefits that they earn and deserve, such that they can get on the list. And the list is chronological in order, there is nothing on the list that moves people ahead of people. There's no component to service time doing war, wartime injuries, et cetera. It is literally if you are as state and federally defined a veteran and living in the state of Minnesota, you need nursing home care, you can get on that list. And then that's your place in the list when you move ahead. All three of the new homes, so in addition to Bemidji of our 72 beds, there's a similar sized facility going in Monavideo and a 54-bed going in Preston. And all, all three facilities have more applications and then they will have beds when they open. The number that Commissioner Larry Herkey told me, as I prepare to go speak over in Aurora, Minnesota next week on his behalf. There are about 27,000 veterans best guests in northwestern Minnesota and we're building a 72-bed nursing home. Certainly not all veterans will need nursing home care. But it's a, it's a big number, the final cost for the facilities going to come in that 43 to 45 million dollar range. And as you're aware, two-thirds of that was federal funding and the rest was state and local contributions. Construction progress milestones and looking ahead, right now, the, the best number that Edelson Peterson General Contractors can give me is 72%. When you get out there, I'm not sure what 72% looks like, but I was there last week taking some photos. Looks like 72% to me, looks like a lot of work still needs to be done. But thankfully, over the, over the winter, they had it buttoned up pretty good, so they could do a lot of work in there. There's anywhere between 80 and 90 workers there on site every day. And I can tell you, it's a bit of a buzzing bee hive, I've been in there and the sheet rock guys are following the painters, it's just, it's the tiled. People and it's, it's, it's a busy place. Few pictures to show for you that Shane had lined up and asked me for some updated things. You know, the exterior perspective, that schematic design was from 2019, but, but now. Things have changed a little bit in terms of structure and how they're going to finish off some things with stone, et cetera. But that's a good look of, and frankly, I haven't seen it look like that because when I joined, there's been snow and there's been nothing, no ice out there. I really look forward to how nice this building's going to look and the grounds when it's not covered in ice and snow, frankly. Speaking of ice and snow, here we go, the exterior view and the covered entry, they just finished that rock there. Uh, the exterior view and the covered entry, they just finished that rock there a couple of weeks ago. It's gonna really pop nice. And then again, we will have that covered entry for, for people to get dropped off and out of the elements to a degree. Uh, the schematic there is on the backside and, and the right side is actually what it's truly going to look like. Um, there's going to be big courtyards off of the households, so I should have stepped back. These eighteen, these seventy-two beds that we have will be comprised of four eighteen-unit households. And each one of those households, there's two, two that intersect with each other, so there's basically wings, it's like an X. And they will share some things and they will not share some things, but they will share as an outdoor courtyard. And that's what you're seeing right here. That's gonna be a gated courtyard for the northernmost two households. And, uh, that's after a snowstorm that was literally taking the day of our community open house. This is really gonna be an impressive room here, which we call our multipurpose. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wondering, um, where, if you know where our, our vet's home sits in relation to the Monavideo and, um. Uh, the other one that being built, as far as if we're, if we're all on about the same level as far as which ones are gonna open first or not, or?
The schedule, as it was laid out first, was for Preston to open first. And then Bemidji and then Monavideo very shortly thereafter. As I understand it, there is a small chance that Monavideo loops us by a week or two. Uh, but Preston will open first in July. Uh, we are scheduled right now to accept our residents on September eighteenth.
Okay.
We will substantial completion right now is July seventh, and then a lot of work after substantial completion.
All right, thank you.
So you're welcome. This room you're looking at here is going to be our multipurpose room. It's got a big gas fireplace. In fact, I think the next slide there. Yeah, you can see that middle one, that just fireplace just arrived, uh, it was a week and a half ago. Um, big room. I've already spoken to the VFW and the Legion of Exilery and I said, I hope they will consider. Coming out and having their meetings on occasion out there to, to allow the veterans to participate in that setting. It's gonna be a really nice room. Um, and just some, you know, nurses station, you know, the, the middle one is literally looking into a veterans' room. Um, out toward, they all have exterior view windows, obviously, they all have private baths. And then just the mailroom, you actually see some of the functional pieces of the building starting, starting to come out there. Um, that middle one, that interior view sitting area, each household will have like a living room sitting area with an electric fireplace, non-heating. Um, but it's gonna be a really nice area, um, outside of the residence rooms, not in, not in the dining area, et cetera. Um, and as you can see, there's a lot of supplies. One of the reasons I took that picture on the dent from the lower right. Was just to show all the things that are stacked up, ready to be installed. And that's what all the trades folks are working on every day. They're up there. Um, interior view from, again, this is all resident rooms. You can see the tile. The bathrooms look big and they are big, however, once you get folks in there in wheelchairs and moving around, they might not feel as big as they look. Uh, but they will certainly be adequate. Uh, something I want to bring up on this. And we are the envy of any other nursing home, frankly, in the area. But there will be ceiling lifts, tracks in every one of these seventy-two rooms. Which is, most nursing homes are happy if they can get a couple of rooms set up that way. We're gonna have all seventy-two.
Are those what they call bariatric? Feel or not?
I- i- in a way, Commissioner, there actually will be four rooms, one in each household that's going to be designated as bariatric. The equipment there will be able to accept a resident up to a thousand pounds.
Okay.
Every other room will be able to accept up to six hundred pounds with that equipment.
That must be similar to, I did the, the couple of years ago, the one in, in Old Flare. Just kind of a model for.
Yes, it was.
Believe, and I don't know how close it's gonna be to, to the final production of ours, but. Eric, there was a pretty impressive facility.
Yeah, and that's, you're right, that's where they went. That's one of the places they went to say, how should we build ours here? So, exactly. Um, yeah, so that's what I had for you. We do have time, or Shane, do you have additional information?
I question as far as the coverage of our veterans home. Pretty good idea of where we're headed and, and a lot more work to do yet. And we'll have our grand opening, I'm sure, very soon and, uh.
Uh, not very soon. Get rid of the snow.
Uh, so at some point here coming up, we'll have more information on that.
Okay. Uh, I guess one of the questions I had was, uh, not questions, comments that I've heard. Is just because the, the veterans signed up. Doesn't mean that when the time comes, he, he's, he or she's going to get the, uh, a room because they may decline themselves. They may not be ready for it. So, but then they'll go back on the bottom of the list and start over.
There's, there's several things, right, that, that could certainly happen and good for the veteran if they're not ready for nursing home care at that point. Um, there could also be the alternative where the veteran needs care that is in excess of what we will be able to provide. If they need ventilator support, if they're at a long-term care hospital, we won't be doing long-term care ventilator support in that setting. So you can, you can be actually both too sick and too well for, for this setting. Uh, um, I can tell you because, uh, resident applications, uh, started last September, that I know there's. A half dozen or so veterans on that list that have passed away since the, since the list was opened.
I guess what I'm, I'm getting at is it's not too late for someone to sign up.
Not at all. We encourage that and these guys, they're seeing it. And the other county veteran service officers in the area, I'm sure will be telling us that at the meeting over the next couple of days.
Yeah, I've tried to get in to see Shane and he's just been too busy, so. I'm joking, I'm, he, he's very accommodating.
It, it is very busy. Um, right now we have hundreds, two active claims that's just occurring, what we're revolving through. At any given time and a lot of folks that are coming in, walk-ins and our, our scheduled appointments as well, so. It is a very busy office. We have the PAC Act, post nine eleven service bonus. And a couple of other things are, are moving around within VA system. So we're trying to get all the veterans to come back in, so it's very busy.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Um, Kevin, so, um, how many employees are, are you expecting to employ? Are you, had, did you reach your, your, your number that you need? Or are you still, uh, doing any recruiting?
Absolutely, thank you, Commissioner. Uh, the number that we will be shooting for is a hundred and sixty-five employees. Uh, right now, there's five of us. But we also are not going to be taking veterans until mid-September. So it's a dance. There's actually seven phases that have been lined out. Uh, we will be, by the time. Early September rolls around, we'll have hired about two-thirds of our staff. Um, that assumes we can get two-thirds of our staff applications. So that is one thing I wanted to steal you for a little bit. Uh, yes, we will have seventy-two beds. We can't open with seventy-two veterans. We have to open with about twenty, twenty to twenty-five veterans, and then we ask, have to pass a federal VA survey. And once they come through and say, yep, everything's working right. Then we can work with the State Department of Health and then get, then we can open it up to the extent we have staff. The lion's share of our direct care staff will be certified nursing assistants or what they're called. Um, HITs in the, in the, or HSTs in the M D V world. But Leading Age Minnesota, which is a professional group of long-term care, uh, similar to care providers, if you're more familiar with that. They came out with a number last week and said there are twelve thousand nursing home. Openings for CNAs in the state of Minnesota right now. And I'm gonna try to hire fifty-eight of them. So it, it's going to be, it's, it's so.
We'll expect great things.
Absolutely. Already been over to Northwest Tech, where, where, you know, we certainly want to raise the tide of, of more people going into the healthcare industry. And, and being able to service all of our entities within the area.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, one final thing, I don't know about you, but I'm pretty excited. I mean, this is, uh. We've been working at this for, for quite some time, a number of years, you know, I, I know that there's a lot of people that, uh. That were involved in this and, and I feel that, uh, you know, they deserve, you know, a lot of credit for their work. Um, but, you know, I, I think, uh. I think we're starting to see the light at the end of the tunnel here and, and, um. You know, uh, you say September, July, you know, but, you know, days go by pretty quick. It's gonna be really fast, so. Uh, I want to thank, uh, thank you guys for, for, uh, coming here today and, and, uh, giving us an update. Thank you.
Um, just, uh, just the community has an idea too. Are there other folks that you're looking for in employment, like? Uh, one time I heard a barber or a hairstylist or whatever, and there might be some small businesses that would like to. Uh, explore that possibility. So I'm sure there's a lot of material out, but I'm just.
We are still looking for, for partners. Thank you, Commissioner. Um, we are looking, we. Some of these services, we are in various stages of discussions with folks. Uh, we are talking to a barber, um, but it hasn't proceeded to the point that that individual has actually said they will. Sign on, so I would say we are still looking for, for that. Um, there are other things we're looking for. We're looking for a dental, uh, provider that can be our partner to see veterans on a somewhat urgent basis. They don't need to go to the ER, but they can't wait for their next six-month appointment, that type of thing. So we do have a list of those and I'd be more than willing to share those with you. I know I owe me or prints that, that, uh, listing as well. Um, because I, as a Bemidji native here, so does me, uh, want to incorporate as much local business as we.
Right. Okay. Yes, Joe.
Uh, I was just wondering what the plan is for, uh, food service. Is that gonna be provided in-house or contracted with? Uh, somebody from the region or what are your thoughts there?
It'll be in house. Yeah, so, so this is a seventy-eight thousand square foot building and it's all one level except for the commercial kitchen, which is in the basement, the mechanical room. So that's where the, that's where the, the big meals will be, will be made by our staff. And then each household has its own kitchen, so breakfast will be made to order by staff up there, but it will be all our staff. We are, however, having to have a contract with a backup, you know, in the situation where maybe our equipment goes down or something. So we're looking and talking to other area providers for catering to have as a backup service.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you so much and we'll be talking to you more, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thanks, Gavin.
All right, our next, uh, opportunity today to learn, uh, from our community is on the Beltrami County Historical Society, Society update.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Commissioners and, uh. Everyone for having me here today. I'm really excited to share some information with you. My name is Emily Faves. I'm the Executive Director of the Historical Society. And, uh, April second makes, um, two years since I've been with the Historical Society, so. Uh, I want to thank you, uh, first and foremost for your annual contribution to the Historical Society. It means so much to us that we are able to leverage, uh, the funds provided by, um, our community, uh, for the benefit of the entire community. So just thank you for that and really excited to share with you some things that we're doing, so I'm happy to get started with that. All right. So I want to just start, um, by talking a little bit about, uh, the exhibits that we had in twenty twenty-two. Uh, we had five exhibits, um, available for our public. Um, we started with Beltrami County Women in Winter Sports. Um, then we moved to exploring the history of the powwow and that was, um, not only in partnership with, uh, experts from our Leech Lake and Red Lake nations. Um, but also with the, uh, Beltrami Public Library, um, who helped to both fund the event, but also, um. Offer co-programming with us. Um, our next, uh, program was High School Reminiscing, which we were able to offer during the all-school reunion. Um, and then the Brave Dine Ever, which was honoring Beltrami County Veterans, which was a very popular exhibit with our community. And then we ended with a Century of Play, um, which was a cooperative exhibit, which was done with the Greater Historic Northwest. Which is a cooperative of museums across the area, um, many of whom still have that toy exhibit up. And we have a small version of ours up still in our research room. We also had, um, a number of initiatives that I'm learning how to manipulate this here a little bit, sorry. All right, we also had a number of initiatives in addition to the exhibits that we made available, um, to the public, uh, through the History Center. Um, our first initiative was Collection Assessment for Preservation. Um, we brought in two, um, experts who provided us with guidance both on our building. As well as the way that we were maintaining and preserving the materials in our collection. And, and they provided us with a large report, uh, that gave some detailed guidance on means to improve that collection. And we immediately got to work on that and I'm excited to share a little bit more, um, about that in a minute. Um, we also migrated to a cloud-based collection management system via the Consortium Minnesota Collection. So we are part of the Minnesota Alliance of Local History Museums that runs that consortium. So we are one of forty-two museums, uh, across the state that participates in that consortium to make our collection available online. And we have started to put materials online, including our North Country Journal, which would only otherwise be available in print. Um, so that was a, a great but very challenging move for us and something that we're still working through and getting our inventory cleaned up. We also began working on our Morrison Collection and the legal remediation, um, for NAGPRA to return, um, sacred items. That are in that collection, um, to the tribes. Um, that actually resulted in a district court case, um, last year, um, and we successfully completed that court case. And we are now working through the inventory per the federal requirements to begin the return of those items. Um, we, uh, implemented museums for all, which is free admission for SNAP beneficiaries and their families. So anyone just needs to come in and show their SNAP card and they receive free admission. And finally, we updated our computers for public research. Um, the computers that we had were about twelve years old and they just weren't performing well. Um, so we worked, uh, through, uh, a company called PCs for People and TechSoup in order to provide, uh, new research computers. And those are available not only for our volunteers, but for anyone in the public to come in and be able to do history research. Besides our exhibits and our initiatives, we also have, uh, a variety of programs that we offered. There's a few pictures that are available, um, in, in the presentation, um, but featuring our creepy doll. Key that we offered in October, um, that tied in with our history of toys. Um, our annual train days and history mystery programs. And then, uh, a paper airplane contest, which was very popular with kids, um, this year and, and something that we will probably do again in, in future years. And then in addition to all of these things, we continue to offer our normal publication and research services. Um, we offer research in person via email, Facebook, phone, and through our website. We offer a quarterly newsletter, a monthly online update, um, blog posts, Facebook articles. As well as partnerships with the Bemidji Pioneer for regular history articles. And partnerships with Lakeland Television and more recently our local radio stations to offer additional history. I'm not sure if you've heard some of the Women's History Month posts through Paul Bunyan, um, but they've used some of the history that we have provided. Um, we have over eighty biographies in a binder available on women in Beltrami County. Um, in this, we, uh, we also had some really great, um, operational successes in twenty twenty-two as well. Um, we, uh, operated on approximately one hundred and ten thousand dollar budget in fiscal year twenty twenty-two. The majority of those funds were still directed toward grants and, and grant work. So it was really the, the programming and the education and exhibit, so all of those things are primarily grant-funded. We do like count part of that into our budget and we assume that we will be receiving grant funding because we, we work hard to ensure that we, that we will get that. Otherwise, the money went toward largely our operations, um, my, my salary. And then, um, some additional money went toward fundraising, which is really our membership mailings and some Facebook promotions. Um, we ended the year with two hundred and eighty-one memberships, um, which is up now to two hundred and ninety-eight. We, we had one thousand one hundred and ninety-eight paid admissions and over five thousand volunteer hours contributed last year. Which was just, um, really incredible. We could not do the work that we do without, um, our volunteer force. So as we move into twenty twenty-three, we are very excited about the exhibits that we will be offering this year, including the one that is current, which is Ivy Wed. A special exhibit on marriage, um, that is up right now. And, um, we've had a really great thing going on in our social media, um, in addition to the, to the exhibit that is available in the, in the museum. Um, we've been putting posts regularly on our social media of, of pictures of married couples who were married in Beltrami County, anywhere from. The nineteen thirties all the way to the nineteen seventies. And we've had some really great reactions and feedback to that and it's been really fun to see the community participating. And sending in their own pictures for us to use and add to that exhibit. In the summer, we will be, um, putting up our labors of love and necessity histories of work in Beltrami County. Fall will be join us, community groups over the decades. And then we will have a special exhibit in our East Gallery from June through September on the Beltrami Bicentennial, which I'm very excited to talk about in just a second. In addition to our exhibits, we will continue working on some other initiatives. Um, we will continue working on that collection assessment, uh, for preservation implementation. And so we have been working on a renovation of our mezzanine archives and our gift shop. Um, so, um, if you see in the pictures on the, sort of the left is a picture of what was the gift shop when we pulled down that slat wall. There was, the slat wall was not anchored to the wall, it was glued on. Um, so we had to completely redo all of that. Um, so we've fixed the walls and we are adding a train, a large model train, um, in the gift shop. That will be really great for our community to see and we're gonna have historic pictures behind that, um, in a background. We have added some, uh, some shelving, um, thanks to Sanford Bagley. So we've gotten some condensed shelving that they were otherwise going to throw away. Our volunteers were able to install that. Now we have twice the amount of space that was otherwise available in our archives at no cost. So that was really, other than the volunteer hours, which were, um, by the hundreds. Um, so we are really grateful to have that now. Um, and then we have, um, invested in some, through some grants, some digitization technology. Um, the plat map that you see at the top, um, is a large map that we were recently able to, to be able to scan because of a large-scale scanner. That we were. scanner that we were recently received the Nielsen Foundation. And then we continue to work on our Morrison Collection, NAGPA inventory and revision and artifact repatriation. And then finally, we are doing some pre-K tour activity develop and some History Day support. There are only three Beltrami County students who participated in History Day this year. That is not okay with me. So we're going to be working on that for hopefully next year and future years to get our students more involved in our history and especially our local history. All right. And then we have some additional programs planned already for twenty twenty-three, including the one hundred and tenth anniversary of the depot, which has already happened. So thanks for you who were able to attend that. We had a really great time. We received a plaque for our placement on the National Register of Historic Places, and that'll go in the building as soon as we can get to the building from the outside past the snow and the ice. We do have a brown bag history every third Thursday at noon, and that is free for community members to attend. And we feature a history expert at each of those luncheons. And then we have a couple additional programs on the schedule that you can see on the screen. Not yet scheduled is a program on the history of local organized labor that will be done around Labor Day, coinciding with our labor and work exhibit. And then a community sign-up day that we hope to host in the fall coinciding with the community organizations exhibit. And then, of course, not but not not last, but not least is our Beltrami Bicentennial and our annual meeting, which is scheduled for Saturday, June twenty-fourth and Sunday, June twenty-fifth. So I listened to the recording of the last meeting where you were talking about having me. Thank you very much, Jacamo. Jacamo Beltrami is how you pronounce his name. Yeah, Jacamo. So now you got it, and and you'll I'm sure you'll remember it. If not, come June twenty-fourth, and we'll say it again. So we are really excited to have an amazing program this year, including the introduction of the True Source Documentary, which has been ten years in the making. Local historians have been working on that. We will be welcoming welcoming to Sari Marino, who is an anthropologist and a Beltrami historian, and he will be coming all the way from DC to join us for the weekend. And you can see, there's there's quite a bit on here. We have invited John Romer to perform American Indian flute with us, and we're hoping that he'll be able to make his way up from Albert Lee, where he currently lives. And then we are working with the museums in Philatrona, which is a sister city to Bemidji, as well as Bergamo, which is where the majority of the Beltrami collection is. To be able to have a real-time exhibition via Zoom, there's a little bit of time zone work that we're going to have to do there. But we're hoping that we can make that happen so that folks can see the Beltrami items that are still available and on display in those museums in Italy. We've put together a program budget. It's my understanding that that was a request for this meeting. So we've broken out some things that we need, and we're expecting that we're going to need to spend about thirteen thousand dollars in order to put this program off successfully. Now, a part of that is for the replacement of chairs and a P A system, because quite frankly, ours are we've got about ten good chairs left in the building, and they they struggle on a good day. So they're just there's just some expenses that we are going to have to incur in order for this to be successful. And then there are just the things that are tied to this now. We're certainly, and we've already started to request public and private donations tied to the bicentennial, business sponsorships. We're looking at grants, in-kind contributions. We're certainly going to rely on volunteer hours. And then we will be charging an admission for the event. Now, the admission will only be five dollars for adults, and it's the same admission that we would charge for the museum. So we're not going to raise rates. We want to make sure that this is community accessible. But also, we're hoping that these will be some ways that we can return some revenue so that we can continue to support successful operations at the Historical Society and maybe expand to do some additional work on the projects that we have. So that's what I have for you today. If you have questions, I'd love to hear them. Otherwise, if you're looking, we would love to have you visit. If you've not been through, we'd love to give you a deep dive tour of our back and all the work that we've been doing. If you are not yet a member of your Historical Society, we would love to have you as a member. Reach out to me anytime about that. Otherwise, certainly looking for volunteers and donations, monetary and kind or otherwise. So thank you very much and happy to take your questions.
Questions? Anyone? Our comments?
Chair, thanks for coming and presenting. How is is the Historical Society building? Is it at capacity? Or or you still have space that you could get new exhibits? Or do you rotate exhibits? Or how do you handle that?
Sure. So we rotate very small exhibits right now. So the ones that you see, they they're just like half of a exhibit gallery. It's it's kind of a smaller space that we're using, and we're trying to use that very creatively, right? We, as we're looking at the changes that are potentially coming in the city and looking at, you know, what all might be happening around our building, we are certainly looking at updating our exhibit because it is twenty years old, and it's time to to put in something new and better for our community. But that's a that's a quarter million dollar expense. So we're taking a deep breath on that for now and trying to leverage the temporary stuff that we have. The bigger challenge that we have is the storage for our artifacts, because we're probably at about eighty percent capacity right now, maybe even a little more than that. Now, that's not to say that we can't make room. A lot of stuff has been, we found a plastic bucket from like nineteen eighty-seven Easter candy the other day that I've been like, what were these people thinking? Putting that in the inventory. So we've got some calling to do, right? And there there's a lot of digitizing and reformatting that we can do to make space. But we also haven't collected items since like nineteen seventy-five, right? And I'm I know that that's unfortunately getting into the older times. So we might need to start looking at external storage options, maybe collaborative storage with other historical societies that are in the area that includes some cold space so that we can permanently preserve items. But that's I'm hoping that's about a five-year challenge for us. And really, our priority is to clean up the storage that we have, make sure that the items that we're keeping are being kept properly. We need to re-box everything. That's one of the items that came up out of the assessment. That's a one hundred thousand dollar expense for us. So looking at grants, acid-free boxes are very expensive. So there's just some some things that we really need to do internally before we start talking about external storage. But I do think that'll have to be a long-term conversation for us. So thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Others? Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So you failed to mention how much the membership costs. And I think the county board here, we have a huge following, and I'm hoping that they join and tune in on YouTube and maybe increase the membership a little bit.
Thank you very much. The membership is twenty-five dollars for an individual and forty-five dollars for a family. And that provides free admission throughout the year. It includes our quarterly newsletter and then discounts in the gift shop and and on other ticketed events. So I mean, the newsletter alone is a really great deal. If you don't get our newsletter, it kind of rocks. Really great history content, fun stuff for kids, too. So thank you for the opportunity, Commissioner, to share that, and hopefully folks will take advantage.
Yeah. Well, that that reminds me that I need to to sign up for my family membership. So I'll be stopping by. One, a couple of things. I follow the History Center through social media, primarily through Facebook. And I think it was maybe last month, a month ago or so, there was a a post on Peter Graves, and I was really, really impressed with how much feedback and how many shares that it got and and how much information that it provided. So I mean, I I follow you guys, and I appreciate that. Also, seeing that you guys were doing some women, women's history. And maybe I want to make a plug for one of a one of the former commissioners that, you know, did make some some history when she was the first American Indian female commissioner to be elected to the state of Minnesota, which happens to be in Beltrami County. So any any information on Sandra King, I would, you know, appreciate to see that somewhere. You mentioned there's there's something over at the at your building?
Yeah. So we have a, we actually have a profile on Commissioner King at at the Historical Society, and we have some records that are associated with her as well and some images. We we use that to put together a profile and Paul Bunyan Communications, I believe, is using Commissioner King as one of their profiles. So if you've not heard that recording yet, I know it's going to be on. And we are asking them to provide us with copies of all of the recordings so that we can kind of keep a set of the women that they've profiled this month, because we think that's just really great history for us to be able to have. So thank you again.
Well, I'm pretty excited to for your event in June, and I'm hoping that we can get a reminder maybe a month or so before, so we can plan accordingly.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for coming in. Big fan of the museum, I have to be honest, and I have to re-up my membership as well, too. So that I teach history over in Cass Lake, and and I've been to a few of your events last month, the the Depot Commissioning celebration with the plaque and got a tour. I'm excited about the the train days on the regular schedule again. So yeah, looking forward to the events this summer and and appreciate you coming in and and all of that. And and yeah, so appreciate you being here, and I hope to send a couple of students over here for a History Day next time. They're not Beltrami County kids, but you know, I think the more the merrier. So.
Well, happy to support them, too. I mean, we have a great network of of history folks. So even if Cass County, they might be closed during the season. But one thing that we think is kids are scared to present. So we would love to come and connect with classrooms. And so that's kind of the work that we're going to be doing is connecting with classrooms and talking about the judges. We're the judges. I'm the judge. I'm not a scary person. This is what we're looking for. So hopefully, we'll get some kids interested, maybe turn into volunteers, too. So thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. It's always good to hear of activities that are good for people in our community, and we know that this is one. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Tim.
I know she presented a budget in regards to the event this coming summer. And I know the administrator also brought it to our attention last meeting, and I'm just wondering if if we're going to have any type of discussion on making some sort of contribution towards this.
I believe that we kind of left that meeting the other night with the fact that we'll hear from the folks, and then we would also bring it back up and discuss the budget. So I think that'll be on a that something for next time, possibly, or?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Sumner, there's a couple of ways you can handle that. You could add it to the regular agenda today, which is within your purview to do. Just add it as an agenda item, and then you can bring it up for discussion. Or alternatively, you can schedule it for a future meeting as well, either in work session and or regular session, if that's something you desire in the future.
Okay.
Chair, my question would be from actually for Emily. Is there is there a timeframe involved? It would would be beneficial to get something done sooner? When are you looking to to need some of the funds for some of this?
I think we will need some of the funds, at least within the next month, in part for deposits. And and also, just the sooner we can replace our chairs, the better. So that's that's super helpful. But definitely, within about a month, we're going to start to to need the funds to secure it and just to know that we're going to be able to put on what we think we want to do. So.
Did you have a recommended or or something that you know you're going to get approximately this much money from others, and you'd like to see a potential donation of X amount from us?
Wow.
Put you on the spot.
I mean, I I think with with sponsorships and things, we would probably realize maybe three to five thousand dollars out of sponsorship. So you know, maybe maybe the balance of that. So somewhere between the seven and seven to eight thousand. Yeah. So, yeah. I guess that's what I'm what I'm thinking is what we get.
Eight thousand, probably.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we're going to move on to the next agenda item. Beltrami Soil and Water Conservation District. Update.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the vast audience in the YouTube world, we'll introduce ourselves. I'm Brent Rude, I'm the Director of Environmental Services here at the county, and I also serve as a district manager for the Soil and Water Conservation District. And Zach Gutnik is with us today. He's going to talk about some projects later on in the presentation, but he is project manager for most of the projects that we do here in Beltrami and actually working with a bunch of regional partners. So we are the Beltrami Soil and Water Conservation District, and this is a semi-annual update. It seems like an annual update doesn't happen as annually as it should. But I want to start out and kind of from the beginning, there's a a couple of people that maybe haven't seen some of this. But yeah, I did. So I'll start kind of at the beginning. What is the SWCD? The SWCD is a local government unit similar to a county, but with no levy authority. So the SWCD relies on outside funding for activities. There's five supervisors that make up the board. And and we're we're the we're the local government unit that is non-regulatory typically in nature, work with private landowners, nonprofits, pretty much anybody who comes to us on conservation action. People often say we're the boots on the ground. We work with all kinds of landowners, anybody who comes to us, like I said. Typically, what happens is willing landowners come to us with a problem or a request for technical assistance or financial assistance. And then we try to find ways to either work with them within our existing framework or develop and find a new framework that we can help them. When people hear SWCD, this is kind of a short list of things that they would typically think of. These are kind of longstanding programs like Tree Program and the Wood Ash Program that people may or may not know. We're going to provide some examples and highlights of other projects and programs that we're pretty proud of as well. Some of them may seem a little random, but they are all identified in plans as either protecting or improving water quality, improving soil health, or protecting, improving habitat, and moving us closer to achieving goals that are identified in those plans. First, I want to kind of just hit on financial impacts. But before we even get into the details, I want to acknowledge that, or maybe remind some of you, that Beltrami County is kind of where we start the conversation when it comes to SWCD financials. The in-kind contribution from the county to the SWCD is probably approaching about two hundred thousand dollars annually. The, when you add in all the support for services and rent and H R and staff expenses and legal and equipment and meeting rooms and all this stuff, most counties in Minnesota simply write the local SWCD a large check and say, keep going out and doing the things that you're doing. Here in Beltrami, in the non-egg dominant world, I think this is actually a way more efficient route to go. There's a few SWCDs in this part of the state that are in the similar vote as we are, where we work together closely with the county and provide those kind of one-stop shop, because we, environmental services and SWCD typically talk to the same people. So rather than sending those people off to two different entities, we can kind of try to deal with and assist them more effectively. But it's been this way since twenty ten. Two thousand ten is when the county and the SWCD signed a historical cooperative agreement. The basic highlight points of that cooperative agreement is the county provides the office space, equipment, and similar services. All personnel are county employees. The Environmental Services Director is the district manager of the SWCD, and the SWCD retains authority and responsibility that exist in Minnesota statutes for the SWCD. When you take away all the grants and you take away all the the big other projects that are kind of fluctuating all the time, the annual operating budget is about fifty thousand dollars. Half of that about is the annual tree program. It's money coming in from tree sales and money going out to pay for those trees. It's a it's a it's a program that's designed to try to break even annually. So there's about twenty-five thousand dollars issued. The SWCD has some discretionary decisions to make, but that pays for their actual existence. It pays for supervisors, mileage reimbursements, and per diems and those types of things. So there isn't a lot left at the end of the day. If you look at grants outside of that, the last two years, those are the in the black, those are the dollar amounts that have been already either received or we've signed a grant agreement for. The two thousand twenty-three is is really large because of one grant that's like two point six million dollars. But, you know, one point two down to seven hundred thousand is kind of what we're expecting is is the the base for grants moving forward or what we're expecting. Although we're applying for additional grants all the time, we have an additional million and a half to find for currently. We just found out a couple hours ago that we're getting one of them that's about two hundred thousand dollars that we applied for. So it's always evolving and changing. Yeah, we'll get into more of that in a little bit, too. Partnerships, I just want to highlight the top two are obviously kind of the the most important one. Without the top two partners, the SWCD really doesn't do much. It maybe just exists. The SWCD relies heavily on building and maintaining partnerships in order to accomplish larger conservation goals with a small staff. The Red Lake Band is just an example of a partnership that we're going to highlight. It's it's kind of just because the Red Lake Band is here, it brings a bunch of different unique things. The SWCD Board is made up of Uh, the SWCD board is made up of five supervisors. Four of them are elected. One is appointed by the Red Lake Band. And that was a legislative action that was done um at over fifty years ago. It's I mean, it was done maybe even in the fifties. We're trying to find that. But um imagine a county with five county commissioners and one of them was not elected, one of them was appointed. That's the situation we're in. Um, it worked great for us. Uh, we're constantly working with staff and the band on common water resource concerns. Um, here's some examples of some combined grant applications we've worked on recently. The first one, we think we're going to get approved. The second one did get approved. That's going to be a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars a year. It's essentially um they're designed to provide some match funding to some of the other grants that we apply for. And then the last one, we did not get funded. But um we're constantly working with them on opportunities. And the Red Lake Band is interested in working with us specifically because the think about the Red Lake watershed and all the creeks and rivers, tributaries that flow into like upper lower Red Lake and through the Red Lake Nation. They all start with our lands that are county lands that are non-travel. And everything that we all all of their water, I should say, comes from outside the reservation and goes into the reservation and then back out again. So um they're pretty excited to work with us and we're excited to work with them. I'll turn it over to Zach and he can talk about some projects.
Yeah, I get the fun part here. So uh PMA twenty-five, the project manager area twenty-five was uh one project. We partnered with the headwaters board, Mississippi headwaters board and the city to implement. And so this was a through a planning process through the headwaters board. Uh, we we found some funds to apply for and make this project happen. It's just on the south side of Irving, there's a ditch. Um, so between Red Lake Street and and one ninety-seven. So the this area, this dish drains the entire industrial park into the south side of Lake Irving, which is only one of two apparent lakes in the county. And so it's pretty important that we we address the phosphorus issues here. And I'm going to just run through a couple of of images. Um, so on the left-hand side is kind of looking upstream of of one of the portions. But basically it was a stream ditch at a a deep channel. And we widened it and meandered it to create uh some storage within that floodplain. And then the right-hand side, you can kind of see the way up a right-hand image, there's a image of of Lake Irving. But um the main point of this one is you can see we constructed a wetland and play what that wetland's intent is to basically remove all the phosphorus coming from from that stream before it hits Lake Irving. And then the city will continue to maintain that and ensure that that continues.
The bottom right picture, yeah, on the right-hand side of the open water is a linear feature that's mainly had sand filter. That's kind of the bulk of the extent of that product though.
Absolutely. Big deal. So one one what happens is when it rains, it'll it'll the water will come up. Every everything will go through that sand filter and then all on the other side. And we're also continuing to work with uh the Vemigee State University. We just recently got a a grant of just over two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to install infiltration chambers that we haven't started this project yet. But just to kind of give you an example of what that project is, is on the the upper portion of the of the graph here. Um, and really what they do is they store a bunch of water just to give the stormwater time to infiltrate through the ground and then get treated. Um, and this project was developed through a a stormwater retrofit analysis we did. And so the smaller the smaller map, you'll see there's red, green, and blue areas. Uh, the red areas are high priority areas to do stormwater um actions. And number fifteen is right there in the lake where you can see Diamond Point. And so that's the uh larger map um you can see there. So basically, right where the number fifteen is, is where we're planning to put the the infiltration chambers. And that'll go right in line with the storm sewers. And that'll that'll take all the water from that area and treat it before it gets to Lake Vemigee. And then we're continuing to work around on Diamond Point, going down to the south uh with BSU on hopefully additional projects um addressing those those uh direct outlets to Lake Vemigee.
What does the green and red mean?
So the the red are high priority areas. Those are areas that that can affect the water quality. Um, the blue are kind of secondary and then the green is is even more that that water is already being treated uh through different city uh ponds and other stormwater uh series. Um, and then also uh on BSU, we're also doing a a couple of different bio-retentions or rain garden projects. We have a one project, it's a student capstone project, working with a class. And then we're also working with sustainability, developing a solar garden and and stormwater. Probably. Uh, over the past few years, there there we've been requested uh from the agricultural community that they one of the areas that need is a no-till drill. So the this drill basically uh was allows them to skip till in the soil, which is which will improve the soil health. Um, and so about two years ago, we bought a drill through uh several different combination of the brands and also got funds from the Red Lake watershed district. And we placed that drill, so the upper drill there is is one up in Black Duck. And we have an agreement with the co-op there that they're going to run the rental agreements and do the maintenance and kind of uh make sure that um for from one landowner to the next landowner, landowner, it's um calibrated in the right way. And then just this past year, when we completed the Mississippi headwaters, one watershed plan, which I'll get into a little bit here. Um, we purchased another drill for the base of the southern portion of Beltrami County and Clearwater and Hubbard. Um, and so that drill is is kind of running the same way where we have an agreement with the Clearwater Shore and Water. And they do a lot of that same work.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So with the drill, who was was responsible for maintenance or or things like that? And and is there a a cost to replace it or a replacement plan?
Yep, absolutely. So we're the owners of the drill, so we're responsible for the maintenance. But we have a rental agreement with with the land use or the landowners that use it. And so they pay uh per acre fees and those fees uh are used for maintenance.
As an example, we shared the the first year we owned the drill that was the Black Duck lot. The there was a thousand acres that were planted out that year. And the rental fee alone, if we kept up that same rate, I want to say the drill paid for itself in about six years, five years, something like that. And so we're putting that money in the general fund and setting it aside for maintenance or replacement of those. The landowners are are really paying the UBIT. We're taking that money and setting it aside and guarantee that you can replace it out that.
Okay.
Uh, another major part of our work throughout the county is uh forestry PFM or private forest management, um where we encourage private forests to stay as private forests. And really, the the main entry point into the forestry world for a private landowner is a forest restoration plan. And so that has been the thing that's typically been a hindrance to most landowners. Because once you have that plan, it opens up all these cost share opportunities, all these other incentive programs. And so the SWCDs have really stepped in to provide that kind of uh initial contact or boots on the ground to the 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 for the forestry in the forestry world. Um, and really, the the reason we can use all these different uh clean water ponds is is widely recognized that uh if you have a majority of your watershed in forest, it's going to protect your water resources. Um, and so we've got a number of different cost share opportunities over the past several years, either through SWCD grants. We recently just closed a a grant from US Endowments for Forestry. Um, we've also got funds from the Red Lake watershed district and then all the one watershed one plans also put into the forestry PFM programs. We also work on Lake Lake Shore and stream banks. So that first image or the top image is actually on Lake Marquette where we're working with the college. And we restored kind of their harbor area and up and around on the south end of the lake. Um, we're starting that shoreline. And so this was actually a project that we hosted a training for nine different SWCDs and their technical staff. So they came on onsite and helped and helped us um construct the the project so that basically getting giving everyone hands-on uh experience and then also doing the design. And then on the bottom left, I just got an image of a completed um shoreline restoration. That's probably maybe a year or two in. Um, and so that's on Lake Beltrami. And then I I believe after that project went in, the neighbors just on the off the left are 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 scheduled to this year to do a a project as well. And the last image I have here is just stream banks. So there are a couple of areas along Mississippi River that have some um some uh massive failures on the banks. And so you can kind of see on that lower right-hand image where the trees and their roots. So you can kind of get an idea how much sediment is being lost into Mississippi River, which is what we're going to be trying to uh prevent or stop from that getting worse. Keep it clean. We were at the last meeting, cock more keep it clean, so I won't stay on this too long. But but uh we just started working on this just a couple of years ago. And this has grown into a large statewide initiative. Um, this is really heavily driven by the Upper Red Lake Area Association, the local residents and the and the resorts in that area. As a main issue of need is trying to deal with all the trash and and waste that accrues through the ice fishing season on Upper Red Lake. And we started back in twenty-one, twenty-ten ice fishing season with about ten grand. That grew to about seventy grand last year. And if all the funds go through into the upcoming season, we're roughly can be looking for enough of three hundred, three hundred thousand dollars if not. One watershed one plan is a major part of the SWCD processes and planning for how we're going to use funds and prioritize resources and where we're going to work. Um, we have eight different major watershed units throughout the county, which is a a high number. But we really only work four. Uh, it's going to be the Mississippi headwaters, Clearwater River, Deep River, and Upper Lower Red Lake. So of the of the four that that I mentioned, Upper Lower Red Lake is the only one that doesn't have a plan right now. And we're going to be starting that in the next couple of weeks. So what these do is um they try to align all the local and state water plants because there's several different plans between uh local county water plans and other state agencies and just trying to get everyone working on the same page. And once we have that, it'll fund the actions in that plan. And the biggest thing is that these are locally driven plans and that they're voluntary based. Um, yeah. And I think the last major project I'm going to talk to you about is the Clearwater River Restoration Enhancement Project. This is one we just recently got funded for and one that Brent mentioned where it it kind of increased um our grant funds considerably. Because we can we can we secured uh two point six five million for this project. And it's it's on the Clearwater River. You can kind of see the the map on the on the top of the screen. About twenty-five, twenty-five miles northwest of Vemigee, uh just north of Pinewood. And then you can see there's a a road and a trail. So the county owns the trail, the township owns the road. And what we know about this site is that the culverts are too small and they're perch, which causes a the connectivity issue and a stream habitat issue, which is our goal to restore those. Um, we're currently in a feasibility phase to identify what are potential solutions for those problems. And we're continuing to work with stakeholders to identify their needs. Uh, environmental education, so we 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 put a pause during COVID, but we're just starting it up again. So this uh spring, um we're working with Gene Dillon Elementary, we're going to be hosting the Vemigee Water Festival. And then in the fall, we work with the with the Red Lake Band and provide a another water festival for the tribal schools and the other uh county schools outside of the county. And then we do a host of education events throughout the year. Now, I'll turn it back to Brent.
And this is our last slide. It's just kind of a breakdown showing the the grants. Um, just want to kind of point out the the big concept stuff. Um, almost all of our grants, without exception, are multi-year grants. And so when somebody asks us, what's our budget, our annual budget? Um, it's really hard to even quantify that because, for example, you know, in two thousand twenty-two, most of those grants, the the window that we would have for that grant agreement is about a three-year. Um, some of them are two, most were three. And so all these grants overlap and they work on some now and they work on some next year and they overlap. But um it's getting to be more and more every year. Um, it's probably pushing about that million dollars a year if I was going to average stuff out right now. And it's just going to grow as these one watershed one plans move all into implementation. Those dollars just keep growing. And that doesn't necessarily mean that that's all in Beltrami County directly. For example, the two thousand twenty-two, there's eight hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars in a grant for the Mississippi headwaters, one W U N P. We're the fiscal agent for that. But that really is for projects in Tascac County and Hubbard County and Clearwater and Beltrami. Most of the impacts to the Mississippi headwaters watershed are in the developed areas. So if you look at the watershed, the developed areas, the city of Vemigee is a pretty big developed area right in the middle of that watershed. And so I would expect over the ten-year period that a good chunk of those dollars will be spent in the Beltrami County area. But it's just a, you know, a a fun balance. Um, these grants typically pay for about two and a half full-time equivalent employees in our office. Um, the rest of that money goes towards some staff in other counties through like the one watershed one plan. Um, and it goes to cost share for landowners to do conservation projects or restoration projects. It's direct direct expense reimbursements for projects or for some conservation initiatives. Um, and a a good chunk of this money goes directly to local landowners, local companies, contractors, engineers, consultants, those types of things as well. So um some of this money, a good chunk of this money was circulated throughout our economy, too. So and that's where I will leave you with. See if any questions.
Okay, any questions at this time or kind of a little pressing pressing the time a little bit, so.
For the sake of time, I'll go ahead. I will call my question.
Joe? I can follow up too.
No, go ahead if you.
Well, just um was there anything like not in the uh PowerPoint as far as the plans for the next year? Something that you hope to start uh or a project you hope to complete within the next year?
Well, the the really big ones that I would highlight are we are, we did get the grant and we're starting to planning for the one watershed one plan in the upper lower Red Lakes. That's that's a big one. That's going to take you about half of Zach's time for the next year. Um, that that's a huge one.
Okay.
The the keep it clean initiative has grown from something where we didn't have any money to really do anything with to now all of a sudden, we're finding pots of money and willing funding sources. And we're going to have to figure out how to find time to do this now and spend this money. Um, so that's kind of grown into a big thing. The Clearwater River one is a really big project. That's uh two point four million dollars now. We we don't know exactly what the total project cost might be on that one. That might turn and be a a four million dollar project. And we need to find additional funding if it's ever going to get completed. Or it might turn into something that's not even a project. It might turn into it's either too expensive or township doesn't want to do it or some, you know, we need willing landowners. So if uh if people don't want to do it, then that project might fizzle out or something, too. But um those are probably the really being. Oh, yeah.
Someone about as ready here uh in the city to address stormwater.
Yeah, that BSU one's a big one. And BSU is working on, one that you'll see is they're working on a solar garden um directly north of their baseball fields uh on the edge of a parking lot there. So they're going to be doing some stormwater infrastructure in with their solar panels in that area. And they're taking up some parking spaces that they don't really use anymore since they tore down some of the residence halls. Um, that's one that'll be visible to the community. People will see it. Um, people may or may not know that the SWCD will fund this or at least the stormwater portion of it, not necessarily the solar.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate having you guys here. All right, and next is the opioid settlement update.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm always up for a challenge. So this might even be tricky for us to try to squish it into our allowed time. Megan Hoyer, uh Public Health Director for Beltrami County. I have with me Monica Thule, who is our one of our public health program managers. She primarily oversees our family health programs. But she's taken a lead in um a lot of our opioid settlement planning. So she will share some of her information with you also this afternoon. Oh, golly, a new one. Oh. Oh, okay. So just to give a little history before we talk about actual dollar amounts. Um, the national opioid settlement um has, so we all know that opioids have become an epidemic across our country. Um, I I couldn't even put a time period on it. Uh, it it feels like it's switched from methamphetamines to opioids. I don't think it's, we can just label it with opioid, but these specific dollars are focused on some of our opioid settlements. So we've seen a significant increase over the past, uh you know, decade for sure. Law enforcement has been here talking about it. Public health has been here talking about child protection has been here. So I don't think this is anything that um that we don't know about. But um twenty-twenty-one, uh Minnesota signed on to a settlement that when we originally signed on was uh three pharmaceutical companies. That has expanded. Monica will talk about that a little bit. This is kind of ever-changing and evolving and much like throwing a dart at a moving target right now. So we're trying to take a lot of information coming at us and make sense of that and then find a meaningful way to use these funds to hopefully help move the dial for the majority of the people, the most people that can have an impact for these dollars. Um, so these dollars that have come in through Minnesota have been specific to local governments. Our tribal communities and partners are a part of their own settlement. So they will be receiving their own funding sources from these same. Our tribal communities and partners are a part of their own settlement, so they will be receiving their own funding sources from these same pharmaceuticals. I haven't figured out which one it is. No, not that one. There you go, bottom one.
All right. Well, thank you for having me. Um, so we will first kind of go into current settlement amount. So. Our initial settlement um award, it came in that it was going to be one point seven million over um an eighteen year duration. Um, with that being said, the first two separate sources have come in um the initial payments. The first one is McKesson Cardinal Health and AmerisourceBergen Settlement. Um, and as you can see on the slide, the first two years have been paid. One was paid in uh October and one in December. And then we have Jansen or Jansen and uh better known as Johnson and Johnson Settlement, and they have front loaded the first five years of those payments. So we received. That two hundred and nineteen thousand at the end of December twenty twenty two. Um, so both of those are being listed as eighteen year duration. Um, oh, I gotta do this, don't I? So just to shine some light on what is coming and what to expect, um. I've listed, there are ten additional settlements that are listed on the Attorney Generals um of Minnesota uh on their website. Um, with all of these, we have no real clear um information on what the amounts will be, what the duration of each one will be. When we will start receiving funds for each of these. Um, we do know like with the Malloncroft, for example, that one has been identified that it will be eight to ten years, but. So right now, there's just a lot of unknowns with these moving forward.
Mr. Chair, so all all these settlement, the um, they're. They reached their agreement already? Okay.
Yeah, so I believe the ones that are listed where they have settlement agreement, from my understanding and my interpretation, but I um is that those have been. They have formed an agreement. The ones on the right hand side with it just say the settlement, I believe, are just, they haven't actually signed the agreements yet, but those are the settlements, the proposed settlements. But more information to come. So, um, so just to kind of. Uh, spread some light on what we, our role is this as public health. So we have been identified as the chief strategist in this. Um. So with that, we already complete community health um assessments, so that will be a continuation of what our expectation is, is that we'll be a part of that. Another thing is that um we are, uh, we are the sole kind of um entity that holds and. Uh, multi-sector meetings, so including other community partners. As we kind of make determinations on what are the allowable expenses and collaborations on what we want to spend the funding on. Um, with that, some of those lead efforts in that we've identified public health, human services and public safety at the start. Um, another responsibility of ours is to hold an annual meeting, and that's including all the municipalities within the county. Um, we have also identified that we'd like to invite some other community partners to be um a part of those meetings as well. Um, but they will be open to the public as well. So anybody is welcome to to come to those and attend. Um, another thing is that we have annual reporting and compliance. So. We just refi- uh, received that funding for twenty twenty two, and so we actually just completed our first round of reporting for the two. Sources of payments that we just received. Um, we have not utilized any of the dollars yet, so that was fairly simple. So, um. But that will change, and like I had stated before, the reporting requirements of each of those is going to be different. Um, oh, thank you. So next is, um, you know, we talked about having a planning committee and who we want to kind of be a part of some of making the, making these decisions. Currently, right now, um, we've met with public health, human services, and we've invited uh Sheriff Riggs and County Administrator Tom Barry. Um, to our, to one of our meetings, and we identified a few more agencies and um. In the area that we would also like to include at the table, making some of those discussions. So that is kind of where we're focusing on. Within each of those, we would like to include um different disciplines such as licensed and alcohol drug counselors, mental health therapists. Um, and so. Um, so the next thing is our annual meeting, like we had said, so we will have the eight municipalities that are in Beltrami County. And then we'll also include, um, these are just some that were identified in the last meeting that we would like to include in our annual meetings, but like I said, we'll open that up publicly. Uh, remediation strategies. So, um, the opioid settlement identifies three areas, treatment. Um, prevention and then other strategies. With that, there is some flexibility within each of those areas. Um, they've definitely highlighted some key areas and ideas for us to move forward, but um. Public health's role is obviously prevention in the community, and so within the, you know, we hope to incorporate that in as we move forward. So some overview and challenge and some of our challenges. So right now we're receiving substantial amount of funding. Um, plan to probably receive much more. Um. But we don't know the exact amount, so that has been a challenge. Planning. We feel like we need to wait until we kind of get more of an idea before we actually make decisions. Um. The other thing is the dates of issuance, we don't know, and the reporting requirements. Um, a benefit is that there is no timeline to spend this money. However, we don't really want it. Just sitting there and not utilizing it and benefiting the community as well. Um. So we are in the very early planning stages, um, sitting on M D H calls with other counties. We are kind of really at the same level that everybody else is as far as their planning stages. There are a few that have already utilized it, but it's mainly to expand programs that they already have. Um. And just to be aware, so because there's um the collaboration piece, it's been pretty extensive. Um. Uh, time utilized by myself as administrator of this, working towards kind of navigating it. Um. So next step, so we wanted to bring it to you to share, um, to get some insight, to um have you provide some direction. Um, we also would like to, our plan right now is to, because the money has is not being utilized. To invest it in a short-term investment opportunity to um gain interest. And then our hopes is that with that, then we can utilize that interest towards the other programs. Um, right now, we are really working on creating that opioid community planning committee. Uh, nearing down the focus of what we run, what we really want to achieve with this. Um, opioid crisis is a wide varying issue, and we need to kind of pinpoint what we really want to work on. So our hopes are to move forward with that. Let's all hit. Any other questions or?
A whole lot of uh information at this point, you know. It it is, and and it's hard for us as a board to give, you know, some direction to it at this point, but it certainly is. Information that we need to hear and keep hearing on a regular basis so that. Uh, I was glad, you know, even just the fact that of our committees, who's on the committee, who isn't, and and that sort of thing. So with that said, um, there's, I'm sure there's other questions or comments.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to, you know, not have the cart before the horse to some degree, find out, you know, get more information, how. How much money are we going to get over what time period? And then ultimately, I would like to think that the board would be able to have a significant im. Um, influence on where that money would get spent and and who would be on committees and that kind of thing. I'm I'm not sure. You know, how how some of this has already been developed or not, but. Okay, just think that, like to see us um get involved to make sure that we're making the best use of that, of those funds for the entire county.
And I think that's one of the, you know, one of our talking points, Commissioner Gossick. I think you bring up a great point. Um, you know, whether one of the commissioners wants to sit on that planning committee. I think that that could add a a lot of value. We in public health don't get to make the decision on what is, you know, what the funds are spent for, but it needs to be this collaborative uh approach. And so we welcome any input. Uh, we caution that we don't want to get too big because then it becomes hard to really sometimes focus. Uh, where where we want, um, not that values aren't important. I think everybody has good insight, but we do want to be able to narrow down and really. What problem are we trying to address? What are our goals and objectives? How are we going to measure that to see how it, how effective it is? But those are the kind of things that we would really value the board's opinion on, who who should be at the table. Because we certainly don't have that answer just because they named us chief strategist. So um. Email, I mean, we would love that feedback from you guys, absolutely.
Well, I I think we had discussions too about just even at our quarterly um meanings that we share with you, kind of updates along the way as well.
Joe? Just a quick idea, you know, maybe involving the the school nurses for the different districts, uh, school districts within the county.
I think that's a great idea. Uh, the school I S D uh thirty one, certainly our charter schools, that's one of the um agencies that have come up in discussions about. Who should be around that table? So certainly um a great idea.
That's it.
Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have all kinds of. No, uh, but I I've been fortunate to to be part of of this opioid settlement. Information gathering type of thing through the the Association of Minnesota Counties because we've um been having uh during our meetings, we've. Been, you know, having some discussions in regards to this, so um. If if you can provide uh email, this this presentation, I think it would be helpful. I I didn't see it. It was in. I didn't notice it was in our packet. So I mean, it it's hard for me to have some sort of discussion, you know, if if uh if I'm just now hearing about it. Um, but it sounds like uh you guys are, you know, going in a right direction. Um, I'm just a little hesitant about spending money on on some things that we may or may not need. Um, but. Um, yeah.
Appreciate that. I got the head dot from Diane, so I think she'll make sure that you all get the presentation.
And I think it really helps that we've got, uh, Tom is kind of being brought into that. Uh, also because he's he's one of our chief uh uh information persons that we rely on. Uh, to inform us also what's going on and who, you know, if there should be more board members on or whatever. So uh, I think uh we're just starting on this venture. So.
So are we.
Yeah, so we'll we'll be, hopefully be uh meeting again soon.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, and if we could go ahead now to the next item, I believe, let's see what it is, gentlemen. Okay, Conservation Fund Land Grant Acquisition. Dick is on board.
I think I'm next.
Yeah, you are.
Okay, good afternoon, commissioners. And I'm kind of battling a cough here, so hopefully I'll be able to make it through here. And if things really go to heck in a handbasket, and I might just say, we might have to resume. This is your next meeting. Um, and they grab. Thank you. Uh, just so you know, and I gave you the PowerPoint that you're in the um packet, but. We know you've had these for two and a half years, and I've been trying to talk with the Conservation Fund to try to figure out if they give me a little more information on what they exactly want to do with these lands. And they never really gave me much of an idea. They were pretty quiet on things. And such, so all of a sudden about a month ago, I get a call from the Northern Waters Land Trust people, and they're the ones that asked if we're interested in. Hopping on board in a grant application with the Lassard Sam's Outdoor Heritage Fund group to get monies to. Purchase these lands from the Conservation Fund, and then they donated to the county. So that's why I don't mean to hit you up with this at the last minute, but we've had it for a couple of years, and I've just had a struggle with. Getting more information. I was going to bring it to you this summer anyway, but this kind of precipitated it a little bit quicker because we'd have to get on board in a month or so to let them know we're interested in participating in this grant. So with that, um. Whoops. There we go. You can see they purchased seventy two thousand acres of potlatch Celtic lands a couple of years ago. And only two hundred and eighty six of those acres are located in Beltrami County, so that's probably why we weren't on board a little quicker with some of these. People trying to obtain funds to help us um purchase those and and get it in our ownership if we decide to go that right route. So the Conservation Fund wants to divest these lands by twenty thirty. And their goal, and I'm probably going to scoot over this a little bit with my throat, um, they want to work with county, state and tribal, and I think that's important. It sounds like they don't want to send, put these into private ownership. Because they want to keep it available to public hunting, public recreation, logging, that type of thing. So I think their main thing is to get it um. In public ownership, so you got local governments, best conservation, sustainable management outcomes for forest land. So you can kind of read what the Conservation Fund's goals are. And then Northern Waters Land Trust, like I say, she gave me a call about a month ago or three weeks ago, and they're going to be applying for a grant next month. And like I had mentioned before, they would pay Conservation Fund for the lands, and then the kind, um, North, Northern Waters Land Trust would donate them to the county. So there's a few pros and cons coming up in here, and you'll see them. And right now, T C F is currently paying property tax on these parcels, and we know how important that is. And so their goal, just to kind of say the first line is to keep forested lands forested. That's what the Northern Waters Land Trust wants to do. And you can kind of read a little bit more about what they want to go, but they're trying to hit everything right, what's the right thing to do for the natural resource. So that's what their angle is. And so some of the county details that I've um got figures on for the county board, like I said, it's two hundred and eighty six acres. And I'm working with Joe Skerek, our assessor, that's valued at about six hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars. Hundred and sixty two acres in Echols Township and a hundred and twenty three acres are in um Front Township. And it's just one block of four forties roughly in Echols Township up there in the roads, right off of Jack Pine Road and um. Echols Road, I believe, is where the hundred and sixty acres is in Echols. And then in Front Township, there are three in a row right there on Front Road, just south of the Power Dam Road. So it's two main land areas. So with more county details to let you know, the T C F lands currently generate five thousand three hundred ninety two dollars a year in taxes, and they've been paying that. And if it would come to fruition where the county board decides we would like to go down this path and acquire these lands, it would be put in county fee land. And the other wildcard here is a little bit, the Minnesota D N R is not interested in acquiring these parcels. I think they probably prioritize parcels across the whole northern um Minnesota. And for some reason, these seven didn't rise up high enough on their list of things they really want to go after or try to acquire. So the pros of this route is, like we mentioned, acquire six hundred and thirty nine thousand dollar asset at no cost. The acreage is ready. It's pretty much predominantly red pine, and it's ready to be thin, so we could generate fifty five thousand dollars in the next year or two right off the bat. We thin on a ten-year program, so ten years down the road, we could probably get roughly the same amount of money as now, but I sure. Can't predict what the stumpage is going to be ten years from now. And then we would provide access to other tax forfeited land. And also, here's a big one. All revenues go to County General Fund. It wouldn't go into our tax forfeited fund to be a portion. So the county would essentially see all the revenues that would be generated off of this. Uh, less running a property boundary lines, that's probably a little confusing to people, but for instance, we have a forty in the middle of private um ownership. We got to run one mile. Of a boundary line around it, just to management here, it's going to help combine some um current tax forfeited land and with these. Open for public hunting and recreation, that's always big. And the other thing that I want to throw out there is we can prioritize which parcels we want and which ones we don't, or whether we want them all or whether we don't want any of them. It's up to us to kind of prioritize which ones we would like to maybe pursue. The cons of this, because it would be Beltrami County-owned land, there's no tax revenues and no pill revenues, and that is a big, big one. And if we do go this route and they do get, these properties get donated to us. We cannot sell, transfer, pledge or otherwise dispose of or any place any further encumbrances on without obtaining prior written approval from. The Lassard Sam's Outdoor Heritage Council's successor. So we'd probably have to, or the county would probably have to come up with a pretty darn good reason to be able to divest themselves of these in the future, at least in the near future. I know thirty years is kind of the length of time that passes when some of these grants go into effect that they say, well, you got to hang on for thirty years, and then if you divest. They're not as concerned because you're not, they just don't want people to flip it. You know, they don't want us to get it for free and turn around and and sell it at a profit, so. Uh, no tracks, no property tax revenues to be generated should the Northern Waters Land Trust or T C F sell to a non-taxable entity. Like I say, right now, they seem to be bound and determined to give it to some type of ownership that allows public activities on it, logging and such. But if they get towards the end of their ten-year, um. Their ten-year, um. Their ten year, um. Window of maybe disposing of these, you never know what they might do. So I guess that's just something in the back of your mind that it could end up going private at some point. And then we have the known at loss of taxable land resolution, which I know Commissioner Reed, when he was on here, wanted to revisit this. And Commissioner Anderson, if you can remind me, I don't think we ever did really revisit the. Actual resolution, which I found, but it's way too wordy to put up here, but. It kind of, especially for the new commissioner, school. The county doesn't want to really give up any more taxable land unless it can be replaced with taxable land is. Kind of the bottom line on that. So what I'm planning on doing this summer is offering four hundred and twenty four acres of tax forfeited land at the, at the land sale. Two hundred and sixty three of these acres are pretty marketable and attractive. Um, a hundred and sixty one acres are, are kind of questionable as to whether they're going to be. Purchased or not because of access. So if we offer that this summer, it would place two hundred and, or two hundred and sixty three acres in taxable. Status, which would kind of replace the ones that would come in at a non-taxable status. So we have at least a little bit of a balancing situation there. Okay. I know when I come in front of the county board, they always like a recommendation. And to be honest with you, with all the pros and cons on this, I'm fairly neutral on what we eventually decide to do. Um, kind of hate to use the term, but I can live with it either way as managing these lands, but. I'm, I'm fairly neutral because there's enough pros and cons that either way, I don't think there's a, a bad move in it, but. What I'm going to throw out there is we need the townships to be on board. Because Echoes would lose about two hundred and fifty dollars a year in taxes. Frown would lose about, or excuse me. Frown would lose about two hundred and fifty dollars a year in taxes and Echols would lose about seven hundred dollars. Might not sound like much, but to townships, every little bit helps. So that might be a concern there. So I'm visiting Frown tonight. I'm going to visit Echols on Thursday night. And I'll try to feel them out just to get a little idea of what their thoughts and ideas are on this.
Do they, do Echols or Frown, would they get some reimbursement if we cut and thin out that, that timber?
No, and that's a good question because Commissioner Gasbagg actually threw out a, an idea that might be palatable to the county board is, for instance, Three Island Park. Is completely county owned.
Right.
And we give Port Ho Town, Port Ho Township, ten percent of the revenues we generate on that right off the bat to help compensate for. What they're not receiving in taxes. So Commissioner Gasvick had brought that up, and I think it might be a good idea for the county board to think about if we get to that stage. Maybe we do give them a five percent or a ten percent to help that township out with what they're missing out on taxes.
Okay.
So I think that's a possibility for the, to be decided in the future.
Yep.
Okay. So like I say, I think that we want to hear what the townships think about it. And then also, um. What I'm suggesting is we really only need to go after six or seven of these. There's that one in Frown Township that's on the west side of Frown Road. Which really doesn't provide access for us or anything, um, other than acquiring some property, but. We don't need it. So I thought at least then we've got a little bit of a, um. Leave it on the tax rolls as far as that goes. And then, like I said, again, to repeat, the offering of the two hundred and sixty acres of tax forfeited land this summer would offset known as net loss of taxable lands. So the particulars. Like I say, we'd only acquire two hundred and forty four acres, two hundred and forty five acres, right in that range. The assets would only be about five hundred and forty four thousand dollars instead of the higher amount because we'd leave that one forty off of there. We are going to forego forty six hundred and ninety dollars in annual property taxes. But we would generate that forty seven thousand dollars, um. Soon for thinning the property or thinning the, the red pine. So those are kind of particulars there. And I just wanted to bring it forward to you. I know the county board doesn't like to be presented with anything and have a decision made right now and then. But they would need a letter of public support or support to jump on board with the. Grant, uh, in April. So I don't know if it's something that we just want to wait and you make a decision next month or. How we quite want to handle that. All they need is a letter of support from us. They said it doesn't lock us into anything. So we could tentatively say we're on board at this time. And we've got a small amount here. There's at least twelve other counties going this route, which kind of surprised me a little bit that. That many counties have that many townships that are fine with them getting this many acres off their tax rolls, but, um. So that's kind of where we're at with those parcels. And like I said, I wish I could provide a strong recommendation both ways, but it really is something. I don't think would adversely affect the county in either direction, whichever way we do, we decided to go. I'll leave it at that for questions.
Mister Chair, I had, as the, uh, little questioning whether, even though it's not connected to the, to the other. Stuff, the, the part that's on, the forty that's on the west side of Frown Road, um, you know, we. What would happen to that forty, you think if we don't take that, um, you know? It could potentially go to some other non-taxable entity that, that would end up, you know, then we wouldn't get any revenue from it.
I wish I had a good answer for you because like I say, they aren't tipping their hand, but if the state doesn't, isn't interested in it, and if we're not interested in it, I think. And I don't know if it's been offered to the tribes yet. I, I don't, but it sounds like it's either state, county or tribal. But like I said, Commissioner Gasbagg, if they get to eight or nine years down their window of paying taxes on something and not being able to. Divest themselves of it, I suppose anything could happen. On that, whether it's private or I guess if it's state, county or tribal, there aren't too many other non-taxable routes they could go.
Yeah, but they could go tribal on that one.
They could.
Yeah.
They could.
Um, and then I thought you had said that it was like only seven hundred and some dollars for Echols and, and that pretty, but. Based on the forty six hundred or forty seven hundred a year, it'd be quite, it'd be a couple of thousand. For each of the two townships in annual taxes, wouldn't it?
Well, I did the math with, uh, the county assessor and we figured out it would be two hundred and forty, a hundred and twenty dollars for each forty in Frown Township.
Okay.
And I think it was about a hundred and sixty dollars for each forty in. Echols Township is how he broke it down.
What, you've got it stated in here for the, for all seven that is currently generates five thousand three hundred ninety two in annual taxes.
That's what the county charges for. That's what their tax bill is.
For those seven.
For those seven.
Yeah, seven forties.
Yes.
And.
And of that amount, the township gets that a hundred and twenty dollars.
That's right. Okay.
So I guess.
I was like, where's that, those aren't adding up. But okay, you're talking about how much the township gets of it versus the, the county.
You did trip me up. I should have been a little more accurate in saying, here's what the county actually gets and here's what actually gets transferred down to the townships.
Okay.
So we get the bulk of it, obviously, but yes, those figures are what would be taken out of that overall tax bill that, the, that we send out.
So if you meet with Frown tonight, you said, and then Echols, if we got, you know, explain to them and see what their thoughts are on this, um. I would say. You know, like I mentioned in the management team meeting, that, that certainly I think would be reasonable for us to look at giving them the same as Three Island Park. And I think Mobile Maze. Um. Are a couple of exceptions that we already do give them a, you know, whatever, that, whatever would be equitable, whether it's five percent or ten percent. To, to make them whole, so to speak, on them all that they have been getting for tax revenue. Um, then I, I think this could be a, a win-win.
It sounds like a very reasonable approach.
Yeah.
Jim?
Uh, Mister Chair, looking over, uh, the calendar. Our next meeting is April fourth, I, I think should allow us enough time to, to do our homework and, and get back to. Uh, the NWLT, that's who needs a response, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And I'll know more what's going on with the townships, not, not to interrupt.
So I mean, I, I would, I would, uh, suggest or hope that we can just move this on to the April fourth meeting.
Tom, do you see any issue with that?
No, sir, I don't. We'll just add it to the work session and then, uh, go from there.
That'd be nice because I could have the opportunity to have the, the township input from Dick at that point and, and make a decision based on all that.
I, I agree with everything that's been said, you know, give the township some time to think about it and give us some time to decide at the next meeting.
Yes, and I would encourage you to give me a call if you have any further questions. The only issue I have with April fourth is I'm on vacation, but I can fill in. My county administrator, hopefully to, to pass on what the. Or the, maybe the two commissioners that are in their district, um, which is Commissioner Anderson and Commissioner Gasvig. What occurred? And then if you could just come up with a route we want to go, I think that would work out just great.
And I'll be going to Echols Township also, so. We'll hear what there's, what they have to say. All right. Thank you, Dick.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
You bet. And can we move the administrative report to. Regular meeting, okay. And with that said, then we'll take a five minute break and come back, uh, according to five o'clock on that, uh, clock up there. All right, we will, um, call the regular meeting to order and with the, everyone stand for the ro, uh, for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No, no comments from the board chair. Are there any citizens waiting to address the board? I, I don't see any. So could I have a motion to approve, uh, the agenda?
Mister Chair, and. Make a motion, motion with the following changes that we add item nine A for historic, historical society funding. And nine B, the administrator's report to the agenda. And with those changes, I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. All right. Could I have a motion to, uh, approve the consent agenda?
So move, Mister Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so moved. Okay, the opioid settlement, MOA and resolution. Tom, you want to?
Yes, sir.
To that.
Thank you, Mister Chair. And I'm happy for you for your consideration, uh, two documents in attachments and also a cover page to describe. Um, the, the request here based on the state's continued work along with AMC. And the state's attorney's office on the opioid settlements that have been going on. You heard a little earlier today during the work session. That, uh, there are a, quite a bit, a number of, um, of settlements that have either been, uh, started or in process. Or nearing completion, various stages, essentially a dozen or so. Um, the Association of Minnesota Counties has revised the memorandum of, memorandum of agreement, which you had already previously approved. To essentially account for these additional settlements that will be coming our way. So this is really just work to tidy up and make more efficient the future settlements that are going to be coming our way. Uh, in order for us to do this, we have to sort of relook at all the documents. They have to be updated to account. For those additional settlements and they have to be re-agreed to with those changes. So I've included for you the opioid settlement MOA resolution. As well as the updated MOA memorandums of agreement, uh, and, uh, am asking for your, uh, blessing to approve those. And also those, the memorandum will, um, designate county staff. As those authorized to continue to work on this behalf, on, on the behalf of acquiring these funds. So we don't have to keep bringing things back to you every single time to get one of these settlements. Um, to answer Commissioner Gosby's question a little earlier during the work session, which we didn't get an opportunity to answer. Uh, it, it is frustrating for us. It's frustrating for everybody receiving these funds because we don't know how much we're going to get. And we don't know when we're going to get it. We don't know when we get it, how much we're going to get over the timeframe, right? Some of these settlements are front loaded. Some of them are stretched out over years. So that's what's making very difficult our ability to sort of plan and develop a program around the utilization of these funds without knowing what those. Funding sources are going to be over time.
One of, one of the good things though, from what I have gathered is that. We don't have to, uh, worry about five years, have to expend it in five years. That it's kind of un-open ended.
Correct. Yep.
Did I understand that correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct. Uh, the reporting, however, will still be required until those funds are used, right? In most cases. Uh, so that can be a little bit frustrating. So that can be a little bit frustrating because the longer we take, the longer, the more reporting we do, but. And of course, each of these has somewhat potentially somewhat different type of reporting required of it as well. So very complicated, if you will. So hopefully that answers some of those, some of those concerns. But essentially, that's what's before you today is just our administrative, you know, kind of behind the scenes paperwork in order to continue. To work towards receiving these settlements in the timeframes that they come available to us and to process those on behalf of the county.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So this would authorize the staff to. Do what is needed to obtain the funding, but not to disperse the fund.
Correct, yeah, only only to essentially execute documents and sign all of those to get the funds to and put them into the county's. Accounts, but not to expend the funds. There's nothing in this that would authorize staff to expend the funds. That's why we had the presentation earlier today because we wanted to let you know what the what the beginning ideas were and some of the planning and the organization around what we what we want to talk about and how we want to maybe come up with programs or projects or services or those sorts of things. We're extraordinarily early in the process. So that's why we didn't have a lot of tangible or maybe even targeted types of solutions for you yet because we're just we're just getting started. But no, the the documents that are in front of you for your approval and consideration this evening don't have anything to do with spending the funds, only allowing the staff to work on behalf of obtaining the funds.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve this M O A.
And is there a second?
Second.
Any any more discussion?
Mr. Chair, Tom has the county attorney reviewed. Other documents.
Yes, sir. I sent the documents to the county attorney and he he has reviewed those and gave me his blessing before I placed it on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah. And I guess just the other question I have with not necessarily the question, but the subject is. Does the county invest that money then when it comes in so that it is in any type of opportunity to gain some interest?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's a great question. We have talked about that internally. And in fact, the auditor and I were just discussing the county's investment, short term investment portfolio, given the favorable rates recently. And these funds, in addition to some other funds, particularly the housing trust funds that we were talking about, the housing. Excuse me, the housing grant funds that we're getting that we wanted to put into a trust were also funds that we are considering on short terms securities investments. So. That that's all being discussed. We don't have necessarily a specific plan for that just now, but. That would be our intentions to try to earn some kind of rate of return on those funds.
Especially with the market the way it is now.
Correct.
I think the rest of us are looking at that as well.
Definitely.
All right, all in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Yeah, let's move to the historical society budget kind of request that we heard heard about. Is there a discussion on that?
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm certainly supportive of a donation. I'm open to the dollar amount. You know, she had requested that. Eight thousand dollar donation would be appropriate. We saw the. Budget in the PowerPoint presentation and there was certainly a well over eight thousand dollars worth of expenditures coming up for the next year for them. So. I'm certainly open to, you know, making that large of a donation. We do have available funding. From, I forget the the letters, but I remember from the last meeting that there is a sizable amount available. So. You know, the history teacher in me is certainly supportive. I think it's a worthy cause and, you know, I think Beltrami County and makes sense for the county to be a sponsor and in a. Entity that donates to the annual event coming up here. So certainly open to making a donation and. Yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Could I ask, do you recall what the amount that we have annually been giving to the historical society? Was it fifteen hundred or twenty five hundred?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Gosick, I believe it's five thousand.
Oh, we have been giving a five thousand as already.
I believe that's the right number.
And that's kind of we've done that on a regular basis.
That's what I just, I didn't recall how much it was, but.
Right.
But I I did get a text from Commissioner Carlson too. He he was suggesting what Administrator Barry had had brought up before about a five thousand dollar figure.
Okay.
That so I I don't know, I guess. They're gonna, I'm open for open for ideas on on the deal and for for already giving five thousand a year and to give them another five thousand would seem reasonable.
Yep.
Well, I guess this is a once in a two hundred year event, so.
I hope they replace the spirit sooner than two hundred years. We're grand chairs.
You know, when we come, you know, when we try to help and support things, you know, I always try to come up with a compromise, you know. There are suggestions of eight, five, you know, and somewhere in between, you know. Seven and a half, six and a half, I don't know.
Did I hear seven?
Yeah. You know, so. Yeah, seven would be, I think, would be amenable.
Did I hear a motion?
So moved to sponsor a donation to the Beltrami County Historical Society. And the amount of seven thousand dollars for the year, is it bicentennial event?
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
All right, any more discussion?
Is there any, are you having any particular fund source that you are just looking at up to the administrator?
Yeah.
I think I just soon leave it up to the administrator if he has some magical payroll deduction from his salary. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, so moved. Okay, legislative or lobby?
Administrators' report.
Administrators' report. I'm sorry, Tom, didn't mean to.
I know there are exciting reports and you'd like to just move on, right?
No, we're ready, we're ready. We just had to see if you were.
Thank you. I I don't have a long one for you, so I'll speed through this. Just a couple of quick updates on the jail project. The sheriff and I are working to secure meetings with the business community. Various organizations of the business community to discuss the status of the jail project and answer questions around impact and and whatnot in regards to how the county intends to fund the project. The goal is to help businesses understand the impacts and the challenges and sort of the different funding streams that the county has available to it and what the impact might be on businesses. We are presenting to the chamber board on the twenty seventh of March, which we appreciate that invitation. And we are developing a list of others that we'd like to meet with as well. As you know, but mostly for the benefit of those that watch our meetings, we did submit three separate C D S requests. That's congressionally designated spending requests for the jail project. Each one of those requests was in the amount of fifty million dollars. One to Senator Smith, one to Senator Klobuchar, and one to Representative Staber. Unfortunately, none of those requests will be moved forward, as it's been explained to me. They found it difficult to try to plug that dollar amount into that specific use. And so none of them will be will be moving those forward. I have since talked with Representative Staber's staff and they're very committed to continuing to look into additional funding options for the county. And have committed some resources to essentially explore. There's some sort of financial research group at the federal government level that does that work. And so they're they're going to pursue that avenue, which is encouraging. On the legislative front, we do have four House bills and four Senate bills that have been submitted, as you know. The sheriff and I did testify at the Senate Tax Committee remotely on the sales tax exemption bill that went quite well. And we are awaiting scheduling for the other three bills on the Senate side. And we still have not heard kind of what's going to happen on the House side just yet. Regarding other legislative activities, we've been monitoring and providing comment on new legislation, things that we've been hearing, you know, that might be of concern or something we want to support. And so, you know, behind the scenes, we're just continuing to comment and funnel our our issues and concerns and and. And and support for various bills as they come up. Just want to let you know, we're not solely focused on the on on the activities of the jail project. We do monitor quite a few of other activities as well. And we just want to make sure that, you know, our concerns and interests are heard. And we are fortunate that AMC has been has been great to work with and their their staff are very responsive as well. As you know, we requested an audience with the governor, lieutenant governor, to talk about our jail project and the issues and concerns around the jail. In particular, some of the comments coming out of Saint Paul in regards to the jail. We were asked first to meet with DOC leadership and before we could meet with the governor, of course, we've done that. Appreciate those of you that participated with us on that meeting. Now that we have, I've requested again a meeting with the governor and lieutenant governor, and unfortunately. That request has been denied. So I'm not sure where to go from here, but that is concerning. Moving on, the Red Lake Nation State of the Band was held last Friday. And the the county and, well, I went to the event along with about ten other county representatives, including a couple commissioners. It was really a great event. I thought it was well run. It was great to be in the new facility there. There's clearly a lot going on at the Red Lake Nation and a lot of opportunity for for interaction and certainly partnerships. It was great to hear the good work of Red Lake Nation and to take an opportunity to network while we were there. I don't really have any important or critical dates coming up between now and the next meeting, so nothing there to report. But we'll have more information in the next meeting. So thanks very much. I'll stand for questions.
Any questions for Tom? All right, now we can go through the legislative and lobbying issues. Is there anyone that has? And we can combine them with the commissioner report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a Northwest Emergency Emergency Communication Board meeting. And so we also did a training, so it was an extended meeting up there for, and that was in Thief River Falls. On the eighth, I think it was. That was interesting to to kind of did a one oh one on the the Emergency Communications Board stuff. Airport Authority got some challenges coming there, more to come on that. H R D C, we got a lot of good progress. Our our staff, we just hired another staff person, very well qualified and. He's going to hit the ground running. Had a fair board meeting last night and updated them on some of the progress and like thereof on our our financial pursuits, just like Administrator Barry just went over. But also about the opioids and all the other stuff that we talked about this evening. And then today I ran over to Cast Lake to meet with the fire chief and the representative from Wood Smith and Knowthing. And we're pursuing trying to look at building a new fire hall and we're getting. You know, conceptual designs and and looking at locations and a lot of the same stuff that we're doing for the jail project. We're looking at doing. For the Cast Lake Fire Rural Fire Association, I'm the chair of the board again there this year. So we're trying to work forward or look forward to that. That's it. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Chair, looking at my calendar, I was also on Thief River last Monday, thirteen for the one, one watershed, one plan. And that area. Northwest Juvenile Center last week, Red Lake State of the Band. So it's it has been pretty busy. A ditch meeting coming up next with next Thursday. Hopefully, I can juggle and reschedule my schedule. But the the legislative lobbying issue is in regards to the jail, I I guess I I'm. A little bothered that, you know, we can't have a meeting with the the governor, lieutenant governor and and. I we, you know, I think. You know, the county has met with with the commissioner, you know, upon their, you know, request and suggestion did that, you know, I mean, it's just like. We're jumping through a lot of hoops, you know, and it. It. It's bothersome, you know, I'm hoping that, you know, we we're trying to do what we can do on the county's part. You know, building a jail, you know, and and it's costing, you know, the county, you know, a lot more money now than it did, you know. A few months ago. So I mean, I I wish there was something that can be done where we can. Have some discussions in regards to, you know, our situation up here, but. Hopefully soon. But that is my report. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, so I've been attending a National Association of Counties. Meetings online lately, mostly related to natural resources and one related to. Well, that was an AMC meetings as well, online via Zoom. One was related to county auctions. So that was interesting. And I attended a BiCap meeting, Board of Directors. Last week and they're struggling finding people to apply for open positions down near. Southern part of Cass County. And so there might be some funds redirected towards this way a little bit. Which, you know, is is kind of bittersweet that they're not finding folks that they need down there, but, you know, it's an opportunity for more funding to come kind of this way for Beltrami County. I attended and took part in the state auditor Julie Blaha's annual State of Main Street event that was held at B S U last week. And basically what that was is an annual. Report that they provide to cities and counties and an opportunity for local officials to provide input on our needs. And so I was happy to be there and. Learn a little bit more about the state auditor's office and and put a plug in for county program aid and and Pilt dollars among our other needs. Beltrami H R A met last week. I I zoomed into that, Hope House as well and. The library system, regional library system meeting. Myself and city council member Lynn Eaton are part of that and we were both in attendance.
Oh, good.
Last Thursday.
That's still at Deer River?
They have been, they've been having them in Walker and but. Last one was highly encouraged to be on Zoom with the with the weather we had last Thursday. So a lot of people were mostly online.
That's understandable.
They do plan to kind of rotate meeting locations, Walker and and the Midgee and and elsewhere. But there, it seems like there's always going to be a Zoom option going forward, so.
Okay, good. Thank you. And I've gone to, of course, we all have our meetings during the week, but Behavioral slash Mental Health. Committee is kind of looking at where are we going from here? You know, there's so much need and and whatever, but. Definitely came up with, there's a lot of goals yet that we haven't met and we we need to to meet on. And so that committee will still continue. One of our biggest partners in that is Sanford. And they were there explaining, and I know this has come up to the board before with with the various buildings that have been built. How many residents are in these facilities now? And one of the big drawbacks the last few months is like everyone else, they had a hard time getting employees with the qualifications that were needed. But most of them now are up and running and they've opened up for the the. Patients to to come. So, you know, in the future, that might be one of the topics we'd like to just be refreshed on is to. How how are these buildings working and the staff working and that sort of thing? Another one is is dealing with, of course, prime, prime health is always there, but it looks like our candidates. You know, we're down some with the with the new Blue Cross Blue Shield entering into it, but. Prime West is holding its own and doing well, so. Okay, anything else for the good of the order? Not, do I hear motion to adjourn?
Come on.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.